I've been seeing you in my sink. Yes, site plan six. I've been under my sink the last two days. They ain't the place to be. I'm off here. I can't face out to try to install the leak. And so once I know it, it's amazing. It is. It is. I'm not talking about anything else.
I shouldn't just call. That's why we're shocked at this.
Right, I need to have a break without. I don't enjoy this work as I can. That's how I, that's how I like this. Honestly, I just say it. Well, at least he's on the thing. I don't do electric.
Why are we off? Not normal with Times Square. Oh, they're going to. That's where I come. I know there's big shorts on after the hockey. That's where I am trying to go. Right. Over here, fall down. Not normal with Times Square. On the Colleen really associated? Right. None of that sauce.
Well, it's seventy-five thousand. We'll have twelve. Probably sixteen, something like that. And then we have five or four outfalls. No, thank you. This is just the first one.
I do have a chip. I do have a chip. I go to the back. I look out here and there's a big tree. That's the point. Did he give you that as part of the deal? He was a part of your. Are you serious? Do you want, do you have? I saw it in the, I thought, I thought you were gonna come get this. You see that always think, what is that doing? I see, I always see that thing almost back.
That's right.
If we, I haven't even talked to any of the details. If we can get it done, this is. Thought it'd be more like your napkins.
For our final four of this.
These are kind of little sports. This is kind of a direction. I did this kind of, so I never caught that. I didn't know what that is. She would probably write a book.
Now the.
I call the special meeting in North Island Times for Board of Commissions for Thursday, June ninth, two thousand and sixteen at seven seventeen P M. All over. Roll call manager.
Mr. Harold.
Eric.
Mr. Heinecke. Eric. Mr. Verkanin.
Eric.
Mr. Gregg. Eric. Mr. Cendam.
Eric.
Mr. Casero. Eric. And Mr. Martino.
Here. Everybody please rise if you'd like to leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody wants to speak tonight, they need to sign the whole get to the podium. As Rick showed, there are no citizens for tonight. Would you like to speak again?
Right now?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Amy Johnson. I live eighty-five eighty-three Delver Avenue. I'm here as a parent as well as the president of Norwood Lacrosse Club that I would like to raise awareness for the need of multipurpose fields, specifically turf fields, large enough to hold lacrosse field pitches one hundred and ten yards by sixty yards. There are not enough green spaces in the township. There are not enough parks in the township. There's not enough parking in the township for these types of facilities. My family and many of my kids' friends, we travel to Pisa in Harmville for indoor soccer. We go to Hemphill Rec Center for indoor soccer. We're gonna be going to West Newton for indoor lacrosse training. We're going to be, we've been at Hotshots and Not Pleasant. If you think about different sporting events within the area, there's just nothing in the township that is available for general use and not. No lacrosse club or something that is owned by that facility. So I think it's time that we get connected with constituents of the township and we begin researching a facility that we might be able to add to our community. If there's dollars collected from all of the developers for each new houses built, where's that money going? Where's that going in the parks and rec for the youth of our community? If we add facilities to the community for the youth, we will be addressing the drug problem without even realizing it. We're giving the kids somewhere to meet, somewhere safe and well committee for the kids to meet and to have a healthy outlet for recreational sports. So I urge you to please think about this, work with parents in the community, and if I need to bring the entire Norwood Lacrosse Club here, I'll do it. If we need more voices, we can have them. But I ask that you start thinking about that seriously for our community.
Thank you very much. Anybody have an comment, love?
Amy, does it have to be turf, lacrosse?
No, it's just more weather resistant and it's more durable.
But isn't grass easier to land on?
Grass and turf, as long as they're spongy enough, don't hurt anymore or less. Like land on it, but it's more weather resistant. Like I've had to, I had to cancel this season, two games because of snow in April, and I had to cancel three games due to muddy field conditions at Sunset Valley where we play our home games. Because the grass was just so torn up and not absorbing enough water that I had to cancel and was unable to reschedule four games because of field conditions. And if it was turf, even if it's raining, it's draining off better and you can still play.
All the soccer clubs got turned out. They're all being used.
Norwood Soccer Club is not willing to work with me because I'm their competition and I. Norwood Lacrosse Club plays at the same time as the spring soccer season, so they're not really interested in working with us because we're the competition.
Amy, how many kids do you have in the lacrosse?
This half season that just ended, when we were on the weekend, we had ninety lacrosse players and that grew from three age divisions to five age divisions. And we went from sixty-five players to ninety players this half season. In addition, the boys' high school team just had their second season where there was school sanctioned sport. And next season, the girls' lacrosse team will also be a school sanctioned sport. So we are their feeder program and lacrosse is growing very rapidly within the township, both boys and girls. And there's a very strong possibility that the Norwood Lacrosse Club will be adding a girls' program next season. Because the boys' rules and the girls' rules and equipment are very, very different. The school district has been phenomenal to work with, that we use Sunset Valley as our practice field as well as our home field. But with the number of kids and the number of practices, we're outgrowing it. And the playing field just fits at Sunset Valley where there's literally two feet between the field of play and the spectator area. That we'd like to offer something better to the community. Like other teams that come in and play us, the envious of what we have to offer in Norwood and make them want to move to Norwood to join a great program, to have great facilities. And we are the only program that we play against within the lacrosse club that does not play at the high school, that does not have a township sports facility. And I've had many conversations with Brandon Raff of the school district that unfortunately, they charge eight hundred dollars a day for stadium rental plus forty dollars an hour for custodian fees that our organization just doesn't have the funds to be able to do that. Many other organizations are not charged to use our high school stadium, but Norwood does charge. I've tried to get the permits for Ocala Park and Norwood Soccer Club has had those the last many seasons, even though I've put my interest in. So plan on seeing me the first business day of two thousand and seventeen, standing in line for my father-daughter dance tickets as well as my spring permit for Ocala Park.
Hey, Tony, sorry.
Go ahead.
Hey, Tony, you had some, somebody talk to you about some interest in reviving Markview Park and it's a pretty big field.
They will be up here next Wednesday night.
I mean, this is a brand new sport basically, and it's a growing sport. I think we need to offer the same opportunity we did soccer twenty, twenty-five years ago in this area.
I mean, it's not meant to just be for Norwood Lacrosse Club. It's meant, it could be so many more things. If it's a multi-use field, you can rent it for different trainings for soccer, for whatever sports are interested. You can rent it out for parties. You can have, I mean, if it's a whole complex, there's so many things that you can offer. There's nowhere in the area that has indoor soccer training, indoor high school community. There's nowhere that has indoor lacrosse, indoor basketball that's accessible and feasible for the residents to be able to rent for pickup games, church groups, anything like that. I mean, you're turning away business. You're turning away revenue. You're turning away tax dollars. I mean, if there is a new home built, you're adding to the tax base that is funding the possibility for a facility like this. If each home that is built has a fee to the builder of whatever that is that is supposed to be earmarked for parks and rec, where's that money going? What's it being used for? The youth of our community deserve to have a facility that they can call their own. They, the youth of our community deserve to have a facility where it's gonna keep them off the streets, it's gonna keep them active, it's gonna keep them healthy. Youth sports promote so many positive influences in life, like time management and healthy lifestyles, not turning to drugs or the darker aspects of life. If we have a welcoming facility like that in North Highington, we're going to address the drug problem that we have without even realizing it. It's time to be connected to the youth of our community and help them. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming up and speaking. I think, like Tony or maybe one of the guys mentioned, you know, reviving a park and having some field space to be rented as additional. I know that's been a problem, I think with other soccer clubs or, you know, other teams that are returning spots. But I'll just give you a word of caution, not a bit on board as long as they're rich, but not too long ago, we had a recreational center proposed to us. And I'm not saying your idea is grand or there, but having a field turf, the Norwood High School body is gonna charge you eight hundred dollars to rent that field because those fields are very expensive and they need to be replaced quite frequently. I think it's probably about a five or six year lifespan. I believe on the last time we proposed that our recreation center, my group was here, they were looking about, I think a million dollars a year from the township. And then the fee structure, if I, I don't wanna be misputted, I still have it at my house, but I think it was like almost three hundred fifty dollars per month for a family, a hundred dollars per day. And I think it was on the referendum ballot and I think the majority of the people at that time voted it down. So I mean, I think the idea of having additional fields might be, you know, a plausible idea for the township to look into, but having a field turf or indoor facilities that the township is gonna run and maintain, didn't have support at that particular time.
At that particular time, I voted against it as well because the plan for it was so vague and so unclear that it just didn't make sense.
I mean, I would kinda disagree with you. Their plan was pretty detailed. I'm, I'll give credit to everyone who put time into that recreation. People always study.
It was a pretty grand plan.
It was a grand plan, but they put a lot of work effort. I, you know, worked closely with some of the people that worked very hard on it. I wouldn't say that's not a correct statement. I mean, it was a very detailed feasibility plan they put together.
The way that it was presented on the ballot was very unclear. I mean, it's been five years, so there's been quite a housing movement in those five years.
And I was gonna ask John to maybe touch base on that. I mean, you kind of looked at like the township's maybe hiding the fee structure money. We put that back into all the parts we currently have and maintaining off key.
There's been a lot, well, there's been a lot of improvements. A lot of them have been at Ocala Park, which is one of, of course, I all call, I apologize, Indian Lake's our keynote. And Ocala is a big park too that we have. That's where the majority of the money goes for the, for the improvements. But you folks know that it's on board, how much money we've put into Indian Lake over the years. That's our most used park. It's not, it's not just for, for youth. It's designed for different age groups. The, you know, the improvements that have been made over the years. But it takes us certainly a while to collect the fee and lube on based on the building permits we issue each year. One thing I will say about fields, I would just caution the board that anywhere we have a field, that we plan on having a field, whether it's multipurpose baseball, lacrosse, football, doesn't matter. You don't wanna put it in a place that negatively impacts the people that live there. For example, in Country Hills, if you're familiar with the ball field that's there, is that probably familiar, that any of us close to it?
I couldn't find it.
That's probably great for the people that come and park on the street and have a baseball game. But the people that live there, I would say it's less than advantageous. It was never designed for what it's used for. It's a little community park for the people that live in the plan. What it's turned into is a rental for people that come. And I'm sure the people that live around there, at least a lot of them, don't appreciate that because they have a lot of use that's not from their neighborhood. So Markview Manor is a great park. It could be a great park again. It's more of a great space now for the folks that are here with a lot of deed for that. We took that because they couldn't take care of it anymore and probably just didn't want it to go to taxes or just go in the limbo. They wanted us to take that property. There's nowhere to park yet to be careful. We tried to access it years ago. Tony's familiar with trying to access it from the bottom through the Willow, one of the Willow Glen plans. And we just, the, the cost of the road was a hundred thousand dollars. We, we costed all that stuff out and it's just.
And that's the same with Lions Park. There's not sufficient parking and it's now in a flood zone.
It's just, I would just say be cautious. Ocala, great location. People kind of know what that is. You go up there, you park, even Indian Lake, there's a lot of homes around. But it's, you all, you're all familiar with our parks. If you try to do anything too elaborate in a neighborhood park, I think it can be kind of productive for the folks that live around us. Just a, just a word of caution on those, whatever, whatever we end up doing.
Hi, I'm Cheryl. I'm a client. I'm at fourteen fifty-three here in Markham there. I am one of the ones that's trying to revitalize the park. We've actually got petitions. We've knocked, had the middle-aged children step up, go door to door to the neighbors, introduce themselves, let them know that there is a park. Our community is turning over. It's no longer an old neighborhood. There's a lot of kids, there's two buses that have to go through there to take, take to school. So right now, the stuff that is on in that park is no good. So talk about parking, food, there are drugs going on in that park right now. It's really close to Tony's house, so I don't really think that, you know, we want that ever going on. So the road that's accessible down there, I have pictures. It's not impassable. We can get that to work. It's not my fault. So I really think that there is a green space that can be revitalized for our kids to use. So we're putting money in the parks. I understand that my dad works for the parks, so I know what goes on, but there's space. This is really already, Amy, this is a tough view. There's a big field down there and I just think that it's just gonna waste. So there's no, there's nowhere for our kids to go. They're riding the bikes across Memorial Manor to get the pens woods. That's dangerous. So Markview Manor is one of the biggest neighborhoods in the township, so our kids deserve a place to go.
Yeah, Markview Manor, the people that have been here a long time know, and I know when I was a kid, I'm going way back, it wasn't a park and it was used. It was the kids that lived in Markview, they went there, they rode their bikes and they walked, and that's who used the park. And it was, I guess, the Markview Manor Homeowners Association, I think is who we actually got the deed from.
There's a moment club that I'm actually a part of as well.
Yeah.
They said that they've, they've tried to, they would like to see something come of it, but nothing seems to ever go in there. So that's what I said, you know, I'd like to be an advocate to see that this, something does happen with this park. Not just being a drug haven for, for youngsters. Take that into consideration, not only me, but everyone else there would be greatly appreciated.
I'm gonna try to work with Dawn and Dan Miller as you come up with, um, working on the park and everything else, bring it back to the board, bring everything back to the board, let you know what's going on. Are you still gonna be up here next Wednesday night?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get as many people as I can, but, you know, people there saying that, oh, yeah, I'll be there. And then they're like, oh, they want soldiers to represent everyone, so I'm gonna do what I can. I have the signatures, so if you wanna see those and whatnot.
I'll get, I'll get with Dan, Dawn, see if you can get down there this week for getting it next week. Formations of change to come up with, bring back the information to the board.
I just have one question. I just have one question. Can you specifically say what it is you're looking for? You said, we want to see something happen there. I mean, I understand getting rid of the, whatever's going on now, but specifically what mandates were you looking for?
So when I grew up, Hilltop Park was rundown, it was overgrown and bad stuff was happening there. We took, my family took the initiative to bring it to the board to get that reopened. And it's now a great park for North Highington Township. They have slides, swing sets. We need a place for our neighbors to get to know each other. Nobody knows each other. There's no way for us to get together and break our case. So I'm not asking for like an elaborate Indian lake. I'm just asking for like a, like a hilltop or, you know.
A neighborhood park sort of?
Just a neighborhood park.
Like this?
Yeah. I appreciate, I mean, the willows are right there now and they even expressed, like, that would increase the vibe of their homes to have a park in their backyard, so.
I was just curious how elaborate you were looking at.
No, we do a hilltop with a, with a porch on, you know, I'm okay with that. We just, we need to do something, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I would also like to throw something out there that, I do agree that we should look at bringing these parks back because as she's, as she's stating, a lot of the neighbors now starting to turn over and you do have neighborhood folks in there. I personally live in Sunset Valley and there's kids that are playing on the road day in and day out, and it used to be a park in Sunset Valley as well. So I, personally, I think it's worth taking a look at all the parks that are no longer in use and seeing if they can be revitalized, nothing elaborate, some type of, of field that can be used in there, maybe a deck locker ring or some, something to that nature or for basketball, whatever. But I think if we're gonna look at one, I think it's worth taking a look at the other ones there. And I, I don't know if there's any other than Markview and Sunset.
I cited that motion.
But we need to take a look at the other ones and see if, see if I can revitalize the other ones in the township. Because just as Amy said, there is not a place for youth in this township to go. They're not playing on the damn roads and that's not the place where it should be. My opinion, there you have it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I totally agree. The more people you have going to a park is the more camaraderie you have between the community and all the parents and all the kids. I think it helps the community.
Here, let's continue on. Word section dispatching items. Or items for dispatching. Next thing, planning and engineering topic.
What I have before you tonight is site plan six of two thousand and sixteen. It is for an Atreus restaurant. I learned it's pronounced Atreus, not Atreus, in the former State Store location at Norman North Shopping Center. Now, I will tell you upfront, for the fact that they wanna add on to the building, this wouldn't even be before you. It would be a change in tenant and it would be none of logic. But apparently this has been in the works for quite some time with Exella because this is what led to the State Store being relocated to the new storefront over here always. Because Atreus wanted an end cap that they could do kind of a four seasons room outside with large windows that could be opened in the summer to create almost like an open air patio. Now, quite unusual for applicants to ask to rock their own power plate for the planning committee. And I thought, rather than try and reinvent the wheel, they did a pretty good job, so let's just use that. This is what they came in with initially. They would like to add the orange rectangle, which would be fifteen feet by fifty-six feet with a three-foot edging and landscaping to it so that there would be shrubbery on two of the three sides for the addition. This would be located between the former State Store storefront and the old movie theater, then Galaxy Fitness. Now, late in the show, they learned, as did we, that there's a slight complication with that and I'll, I'll come to that in just a moment. This is what the proposed building would look like. They would do a facade treatment on the front with lighting, which is their signature look for their restaurants. which is their signature look for their restaurants. And on the right side, they would have awnings over the windows. Again, with lighting over top of those awnings, some shrubbery. And that bump out that they're proposing to add would be this piece right here. This covered walkway is what's there now in front of the stores. Remember, there was Radio Shack and Warner's kitchens and so forth along there. Those are all covered entrances to those storefronts. This was their proposed floor plan, looking at the inside. It's not a terribly large restaurant, as restaurants go. There is a lounge area in the front. You can come in and go straight back into the dining room, restrooms, kitchen and prep area. And then the outdoor patio, they even have a small room that can be reserved for private functions. Late in the game, they learned that when Colony Holding sold the shopping center to Exella, they wisely preserved a right of way, reserved a right of way for themselves to get back to their building from Laurel and Avenue. Now, the interesting part is, even though Hill Avenue, Hill Drive comes down and terminates at the shopping center, there's not a right of way for it. So while there is a right of way through the shopping center, nobody's ever said, oh wait a minute, you're working for Colony Holding, you can't drive through the shopping center. We have no legal rights regarding that. We brought that up with the applicants and they said, we understand your concern, but we're attentive. You don't own the property. We can't grant a right of way to you. And I said, well, I understood that's something we need to negotiate with Exella, but there is a right of way on the books for Colony Holding. How does your proposed addition impact that right of way? Well, they got a hold of it and they plotted it onto the survey of the shopping center and they found out that this wide crosshatched area is the right of way that was reserved to the point that it caused an impact with that patio addition for that first, maybe 35, 40 feet towards the front of the building. So when they realized that, they said, well, we'd like to do exactly what we said before, but slide the patio 35 to 40 feet back on the side of the building. That means the entrance to it will be closer to the front of the building rather than the back. But it doesn't really change anything, but it does leave that area open so that there's no interference with the right of way. They have agreed that they will screen the dumpster that is on the side of the building now and looks rather raw. And we've asked them for a parking calculation, although the beauty of this usage is that there's reciprocal parking with Exella help because their demand is on weekdays during the day. Atreus demand, Atreus demand is going to be immediate on weekends. So I don't see that there's any parking issue there at all. I will state that I've spoken with Commissioner Vasenda and he has asked about handicap parking. And I believe there are four handicap spaces out here in the center that were designed to serve all of those storefronts. We will work with them if it makes more sense to put a handicap spot right here. We can certainly do that. Another issue we raised is the fact that you've got traffic coming out this way and we were concerned about whether that stop sign would have to be moved because you've got a blind corner there. Moving the patio back 35 to 40 feet solves that problem and it's a benefit for everybody to do that. So with that, let me open up for questions if you have any. I will tell you, I learned that Atreus has nine restaurants in this room area. It's a local chain.
Andy, I definitely got one question. On the parking, the parking spaces, the four parking spaces alongside the building that are next to the proposed patio?
Yes.
Is that any issues with that easement there and those parking spots being that?
Well, the easement says that you can't go on it. But it appears that you've got about 18 to 20 feet for the parking stalls. So I don't think you have an issue with that. I think it'll work. I was concerned when they initially said patio. I didn't know what the size of it was. And I thought, oh my gosh, if they start going into that thruway, we're going to have a real problem. Or the theater owned by Exella would have to give up some of its parking on the side. And it looks like it should work.
All, there's not room for all four spots. They kept that down. I don't know if you're...
Certainly the closer you get to the front of the building, the closer the right of way becomes.
Yeah, I just have a concern over how, you know, that might, four spots could be pushing in that space. And I realize it's kind of hard to tell from the drawing. And I do agree that that may be a better spot for a handicap parking, Andy, anyway.
It does look to me like they left one spot open at the end for the walkway to come out. It's a little hard to tell because the drawing is crazy. It looks like you're not going to reach the end of the sidewalk and suddenly be confronted by the front bumper of a car. It looks like that last one is open. So that may be something where perhaps a handicap space could go there and you'd have that side area straight so that nobody would park there.
Well, one would have to be man-accessible, so that would take up a space right there. So there would only be three handicap spots, one of them being man-accessible.
You wouldn't need three handicap spots for one restaurant. I would propose that the ones that are out of the parking lot now remain. Some of this will tie into, we'll have to make sure they put in a ramp. Get downtown parking lot ready with four or five inch strip of strip.
Andy, Monday at the meeting, they talked about some protection in the shrub we're getting out there.
Yes. The police department raised, I think, a very valuable point. They said, what if a car, everybody's distracted by their smartphones? What if somebody's coming along and gears a little bit towards the patio? So what they agreed to do is put pipe bollards at the corners hidden in the shrubbery so that you wouldn't see them. They're not going to be these ugly yellow things, but should somebody leave the car, they'll hit that before they hit the patio.
And being that, I've seen on the drawing, there's some lighting up on the building. Is there any lighting in that shrubbery area?
I think the only thing that is, is those down lights.
But they go down on the awnings, correct?
Yeah.
Is there anything that does indicate like the curving there? I mean, what I'm saying is a lot of people are used to one through there and not being there. And you see lights up on the building, but grow up in the building, looking in the building and all of a sudden, that curves.
Right. I give you great difference because you're looking at it from a police officer's standpoint. Would it make sense to have them paint all of that curving yellow so that it stands out a little more with reflective paint?
Something to designate it.
Sure. You can ask them to do that. I don't think that...
And the yellow would designate more of the parks on Tuesday and have people parking on the answer. They know you're going to.
Mr. Blanken, going on what Commissioner Casera says, I'd be a little concerned, especially because of the cars you have there and somebody backing up hitting the accelerator instead of the brake. In lieu of shrubbery, what about those decorative balusters that they put out with the planters on top that would give, that would take the impact of the vehicle instead? We're seeing more and more businesses do that that have the outside patios to stop a vehicle if it's speeding through the area in lieu of shrubbery. They would get, they make them all different kinds of designs. You can get them with the planters at the front. They can put some nice fire and many trees. But then again, the public would be better protected. Hopefully it never happens, but they would be better protected. You been to one or more?
Yes, sir, I am.
Let's see if we can find something, maybe a photo or a manufacturer's site. Maybe we can direct them to that and see if that'd be willing to do that.
Sure.
I don't believe anybody's here tonight from Africa or that.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Any further board comments?
I got two things, Frankie. Couple of things I'd like us to take a look at here in the future. And I think this one, the first one might have been talked about before I was on the board. I'm not sure whether by who. But knock boxes for businesses within the township. Is everybody familiar with what a knock box is? Was that discussed prior, before me getting here? I believe it might have been. I don't know if Bruce, do you have any type of work or effort inside there that we can possibly adopting? I mean, you obviously have some new businesses coming into township. Atreus, the new development of Walmart. The knock boxes can be, I think, a pretty good thing, especially at 3 o'clock in the morning with the fire going off or a burglar going off there. I think we really need to look at adopting something here in the township that requires new businesses to install knock boxes. If a place is being renovated, they should be putting the knock box in. I think it's just going to be better all the way around for a police fire and EMS at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning where we're trying to get a key order to come out there and they got an hour ETA.
Yeah, just for reference, we, the fire departments, I honestly don't recall which month it was, came back to us, it was earlier this year, late last year. I can't remember, I can't recall exactly. And wanted to work on that. I informed the board, probably saw the board, I don't remember the email I sent, that just was something they wanted to work on. And I know that some of the chiefs, all the chiefs, I don't know exactly who that was, Tom Clark is our building inspector. And Tom had experience with the program. He worked with Marvysville. And Andy and I just talked about that two days ago because it was something discussed in our staff meeting. And I know that based on the last meeting that Tom had with some of the fire chiefs, or maybe all of them, I don't know which ones, they're in the process of trying to, on their end, determine exactly what they want to do and what they'd like to see from the township. And we kind of put it back in their hands to say, if you want us to do something, let us know what you want us to do. I think the commissioners would have to agree to that, but we were looking for some direction from them. So we're just waiting for that at this point. Plus the board wants to, you know, move forward with it. We're waiting to hear back from them on exactly what they're looking for. I think they were trying to determine if there were going to be one key, multiple keys, one for each fire department. They were trying to get that figured out on their end. That's why I'm interested in where it was left. When we get something to bring back to the board from now, I'm sure they bring it back.
Andy, is there, so is there anything we can get from Virgil as a draft or how they build on it? Are you, Bruce, anything that you work with?
Yeah, I think Monroe has some, something, like just let me, let me get back to a couple of guys. At least get some language.
I would appreciate that. So I get it for the fire chiefs, but they're not going to be here until September. So long as, you got new businesses and places being renovated now, right? Longer the wait, the more pain the bug is going to be to get these places to what it meant.
I just have a question on that. I understand the value of them again. I mean, I understand that people have them, but whose issue is this right now? I mean, if it's not coming from the fire departments, is this your issue?
This is, I know we've talked about the past and I just want to know where we stood on it. So, I mean, no, I mean, not directly is on with the fire or the fire chiefs. I haven't talked to them. This is me, I thought this up on my own, right? So, but no, for me and the guys who are out there at 2 o'clock in the morning got to wait an hour and a half for a key order to get there. And I'm sure Chief Sec will tell you the same thing with the police department. You know, it's a pain in the ass. You're tying up units and you've got people sitting out there waiting for somebody to get there for smells and bells, whatever. So long as we should have it and we should be requiring these new businesses that are coming into township to have this on their establishments.
That's intended, we should have it. But you asked a question.
You disagree?
I, I'm not sure that I agree at this point.
Why?
Because I, at this point, you seem to be the only one that's inconvenienced by it. We don't have the fire chiefs here. We don't have the fire departments. I don't care the chief bringing it up to us. We did bring it up before, we did discuss it and it was put back on the fire chief.
You know what, you're right. Forget it.
Forget I brought it up.
Okay. I will get our team here for you, Jake, for your knock box. I felt...
Well, why do you have to motivate them to do that? It's my question. Why do you need to be here? Can I speak to the fire chiefs? Can I speak for the people in this township? You can't. You just admitted, you haven't talked to them. Why don't you talk to them?
Everything they don't have to do.
You just then created one of your...
No, I don't create this.
This was discussed in the past, Rich. Yeah, it was. And it was revised by us. And I'm trying to revise it because I think something needs to happen in the township. Because you think it needs to happen. Unless we're telling you to do it.
You know, you bring things up, you know, just like anybody else brings things up. You used to like to bring something up.
I agree. But this is a topic that has been ongoing and joined and slayed wherever it stands. So why not let it run its course? That's all.
All right.
So just because I'm trying to light a fire, you know what? That's it. I was waiting for you later, Richard. The second thing is, I attended the NACMA meeting last night. And I know this is far and wide of the past. And they do all their meetings pretty much papers with tablets. And they have a 65x class, whatever. They put the agenda up there. I think we need to kind of hook it going that way as well instead of doing the run and keep killing trees and having stacks of papers this big. In today's technology, you know, everything can be put in a Adobe format. If you can email it out, everybody can take a look at it. Instead of having to print everything out and have it put in a book, it can be sent out to everybody, we can have it on the tablets. And again, this is just something, I'm not saying to do this, I think you just take a look at doing this. I mean, it's 2016, not 1916. So, I mean, it is, from what I saw, it was pretty efficiently done on NACMA.
It is.
I think it's worth working into.
I've been down there also for making sentiments. It's very efficient, very smooth, the way you go is, and I think this day and age, you should be doing it.
Every document, pretty much, regardless of what it is, Excel, PowerPoint, Word can be converted to PDF format.
I believe in your last year or something like that, Dawn and I talked about that.
I think it's worth looking into. I mean, I talked to my friend who said they got tablets for like eight bucks a piece, you know, so.
Do you look into that for a while?
We can certainly look. And actually, Commissioner Vasenda asked me, it's been at least a few months since he brought it up. And he said it's something he wanted to look at. And I said, that's fine, I'll look and see what seems to make the best sense. And I think what's important is you just want to be able to look, find your documents. They can certainly all be electronically authored. If you can't find them, we'll make sure you can. We don't want you to just have lots of documents on your computer or on a laptop. I mean, our book, even though it's paper, I think it's pretty organized for the...
Right. I believe the same thing could be done.
I just want to make sure it's something that is, it works from a standpoint of making sure you can find your documents, even though it's electronic, you don't want to not be able to locate things. So that's why I can start to make sure to satisfy them.
I think I actually played my rock stuff three or four years ago. I think you're right. At that time, probably commissioners, I guess, a group or consensus, you know, thought maybe it wasn't the best, you know, direction to go at that time. I know I'm probably obviously the youngest commissioner, but I still like having paper copies. I mean, I wouldn't be totally proposed, you know, having it electronically, but I would be the pen and the butt that asks for it still on paper because I have a stack of all, all the meetings I own and still keep them. So I'm not saying you can't keep stuff electronically, but I still like having stuff on paper, but I can be the pen and the butt.
That's, yeah, I'd rather have electronic.
Yeah.
Personally. That's personal. Personal. Personally, right.
Anybody else have any problems? Other comments? Enough, here, give one more, Dave.
Mr. Nager?
Just guys, all of the bigger day, close enough, we're having sex after the meeting, five five military issues, we have community agents, and we're here to serve. Eight o'clock.